Well, time to see everybody here tonight. Would you please rise and join me in the pleasantries? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we now have the funnest part of the meeting, our student spotlight. Dr. Barbara Stausky, you're in charge.
Okay, we are excited this evening to recognize our student athletes who were successful with our winter season. Many of these student athletes participated in the Section 3 championships. They walked away with team titles or individual titles, and they also competed in state championships. We're going to first begin with boys wrestling. If Coach Burkenshaw and Coach Alf are here, you're free to come up. We're going to first recognize Zach Boudreau. Zach, come on up. Zach was Division 1 Section 3 champion in boys wrestling at 101 pounds. He also competed in the boys wrestling state championship. Also competing in the state championship, we have Kale Bruce.
Parents, if you want to get a picture, please come up front.
Jeremy, get your head out of the way.
For boys swimming and diving, we have Coach Ludden and Coach Stasso. We're excited to recognize this evening Alex Nacina, who competed in the boys state swimming championships. And we're also excited to recognize Nicholas Pombo. He was a Section 3 Class A boys diving champion. He also competed in the boys diving state championships, and he finished fourth in the state. So congratulations. We're happy to know Nick's story as well. I mean, he didn't begin competing for the volleyball bees until last season. So to achieve fourth place in New York State in diving after two years of diving is quite unbelievable. So congratulations.
And again, if anybody wants a picture, please feel free to come up and draw me a picture.
We will transition to boys and girls indoor track and field. Coach Spicer, Coach Petrelli, Coach Ross, Coach Gallagher, here. The first athlete we're going to recognize is Owen Johnson. Owen was the Section 3 champion in the boys pole vault, and he competed in the indoor track and field state championship. Next, we have Juliana Gingrich. She and I were the Section 3 girls shot put champion, and she also participated in the state championships. Next, we have the 4x200 meter relay team consisting of Anaya Johnson, Emerson Clavio, Mary Williams, Cam Barton. And these were the Section 3 champions in the girls 4x200 meter relay, and they also competed in the state championships. Also for boys and girls indoor track and field, we had other athletes who competed in the state championships, whether they participated individually or as alternates to the various relays. We have George Bauer, Morgan Bolton, Katie Boucher, Abby Buchanan, Wyatt Decker, John Godiner, Adriana Francisco, Rex Jerkingard, Manaya LeBrow, Mia Roberts, and Chris Leller. Congratulations to all of you.
Hi, guys. I don't know if this kind of chef can get close. A little bit of a lean. I don't want to back up to anybody. Nick's not right here, guys. One more for me, and then I'll get out of the way.
Next, we move on to girls wrestling. Didn't see Coach Cataldi, but he's here. For girls wrestling, we're excited to recognize Ariana Leo, who represented our district in the girls wrestling state championship. First time for a girl's wrestling.
What would you remember?
Oh, thank you.
One more for me. Thank you.
And last but not least, for boys and girls bowling, Coach Hagan. We are recognizing Xenon Gazarovski and Jordan Savani, who competed in the boys state championship. And on our girl's side, we are recognizing, also competing in the girls bowling state championships, Samantha Haas and Lizzie Hildreth. We're going to shift slightly to recognizing senior Sadie Ward. Sadie, why don't you come on up? Sadie is being recognized because she earned first place in the First Aid CPR competition of the Skills USA Regional Competition, which was held at SUNY Morrisville on Friday, February 7. Sadie will be eligible to compete at the Skills USA State Competition at the New York State Fairgrounds on April 24. Congratulations, Sadie. In our final recognition this evening, we're going to shift to our staff member recognition. So we're excited this evening to recognize CW Baker High School Assistant Principal, Jennifer Turpinin, for her professionalism and leadership during the lockdown and lockout on Thursday, March 25, 2025. As many of you know, as many of you know, high school students reported that a student was in possession of a BB gun that was later determined to be a plastic Corby's gun. As a result, the building went into a lockdown. Mrs. Turpinin was serving as the acting principal at the time Mr. Denton was actually out of the office, and she provided commendable leadership and communication that day. Renee Burnett, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, nominated Mrs. Turpinin for this recognition. Here's an excerpt from her nomination. Assistant Principal Turpinin demonstrated exceptional leadership and quick thinking during the recent lockdown of Baker High School in response to a weapon threat. By prioritizing the safety and well-being of students and staff, she ensured that everyone remained calm and secure while authorities were alerted. Her decisive actions and clear communication were crucial in managing a very tense situation, reflecting her commitment to providing a safe and supportive school environment. Additionally, she expertly supervised her team, delegating responsibilities with precision to ensure an efficient and coordinated response. Her ability to keep everyone focused and organized during such a critical time and a stressful time is a testament to her strength as a leader. On behalf of the Bonzel staff and community, we congratulate you for your outstanding service.
So again, congratulations. Congratulations to our student athletes, their coaches, and a big thank you to the parents for all your support. So we're going to commence with the business part of the meeting. So I'm sure nobody has homework. You've already done it. But if you want to go home and do some homework or whatever, we will be done in time for the NCW finals. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Okay. Correspondence for our Asian committee.
It was, in fact, it was on artificial intelligence. We did, yes. But we had our typical attendance. It was a positive conversation. It was good discussion. Renee brought up, I can't remember the names of them, but I think there are three pilots that we're currently using right now for schools under AI. She said there was a handful of teachers that have been using it for different things. So, you know, just getting the ball rolling, I guess, that kind of thing. But it was good. Eric was there. He had some good information as to what they're doing to kind of monitor.
One thing that I, this is somewhat related. I didn't think about it at the time of the community cafe, but I heard through a webinar that I attended, the idea of shifting the thinking with the terminology instead of saying artificial intelligence, because it makes us think that, you know, we're not as good as we could be, right? To authentic intelligence. So just shifting that mindset of people might change the perspective a little bit. And, you know, it's not replacing all of us as humans or individuals working as students, so.
Thanks. Then, of course, on the 17th, we did have a work session. March 31st was the superintendent's conference day, and I know some people attended. We had a speaker on the science of reading. And I know Sam, I know Sam was there, Christie was there. Tommy was there.
There was.
Anybody want to comment?
No, it was a wonderful, she was a wonderful speaker and a lot of great information. Made us really think. I thought at the end of the presentation, it really made you think about how you're going to move forward and, you know, with a different scenario. It was really moving to, she had great information.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance actually to see the keynote speaker, but I did get a chance to go to the breakout sessions to fit into my schedule. And one thing I actually, we were talking, Carrie and I were talking today, actually, about how impressed I was, because I mentioned this to her, with just the organization of the day. I mean, there were so many options for people to take advantage of. And it seemed to me, just speaking with teachers in the hallways, the opportunity for professional development can sometimes fall flat if it doesn't make sense to the folks that are attending. And it seemed to me like with the variation of opportunities that the teachers had, it was a little bit of something for everyone. And I know some of them were planned purposely that way, but I was just impressed with the organization piece of it. And then the one presentation that I had the opportunity to sit in on was excellent. So kudos to Tony and his team for organizing and having it go off the way that it did. It was just super impressive. And a lot of our teachers, educators, administrators present these sessions.
Right.
Shows their depth of the alchemy.
Yeah, I think that's primarily what they equal have, yeah.
So it's a great testament to their professionalism and their abilities. Learn from each other. And then the OCIM, Bosse's annual meeting, which I know a couple people attended. Andrew, you wanted to talk about that yourself.
I already talked about it. I'll let you go after me. So this is a really cool event because they put on like a meal for the attendees, and it's all the kids that go to Bosse's that make the meal and present the meal. And each of the kids kind of give a little testimonial about why they're in the Bosse's program and stuff like that. And it's really neat to hear all their different perspectives, and they were all from across Anadaga County. And then, you know, they go through, after the meal, we have the actual meeting, and they go through the budget. And they play a video that talks about all the different things that Bosse's does. And that's always very informative, and there's so many things that they offer. What was the slogan, "More Than You Think"? Is that their new slogan? So they got a cool little marketing thing they're trying to do to expand people's perspective of what Bosse's is and what they offer for students.
Great, thank you. And then, anything else? The facilities, we had a facilities meeting before this, and Luke said he wanted to talk about that.
Thank you, Victor. I have a facilities committee met with the entire board for the board walkthrough on our DURD junior high construction update, and we were able to tour where they are today and just look at the transformation that our contractors and everybody's hard work has gone into from the ground up. Things have gone quite significant over the past year. There were a couple delays due to the weather. It's been a really harsh winter, and just keeping temperature regulation for applications delayed them slightly. But they are running on all eight cylinders now that materials are there, and they're starting to move quick. And the goal is for it to be done on time. So I think just seeing the transformation that they've done so far in all of the steps for moving forward, I think the students are really going to be impressed when they start come September.
Great, thank you, Nikki. And it's not noted here, but I know that there was a, oh, I'm sorry. I have something to say.
I just wanted to share a couple of other, but maybe you can say. So guys, I went to the Hall of Fame for the arts. Sam and I and Joe did. It was amazing. I'm not kidding you. If you get a chance to go next year, it was really, really terrific. Every board member gave a really thorough introduction to the honorees. We had some really impressive people in the arts who attended Baldonsville. It was really amazing. And each honoree got to, you know, say a few words, and it was really so heartwarming to hear them talk about how much Baldonsville meant to them and how much it contributed to their growth in the arts.
A lot of history, and a lot of history in Baldonsville and the schools as well, too. They got their start here and are now able to do all these wonderful things, and they were so happy to come back and share everything.
And then I wanted to share that Sam and I got to speak to the participation in government class. Now, we did not do as well as Jeremy. We were so much more than Jeremy was. And Don, you went together. I'm sure we were not as good as you either, but we had a great time. I mean, the students were so engaged. They gave us lots of great feedback, and we just tried to encourage them to get involved in their local government. And we told them a little bit about how they can vote, you know, in May, and they could come here and speak to us or attend our meeting, you know, and hear what we talk about. And so, I don't know. I don't think anybody is going to take us up on that tonight, but so apparently we didn't do very well, but we had a ball.
Yes, so this is, every Friday, some of the teachers are going to help me with this joke. It's a seniors symposium, and they invited a bunch of elected people from around the town and village.
Yep, elected officials, business owners, the chief of police. So it was, it's between now and the end of the school year. Did you know how senior year keeping engagement for our particularly government students between now and the end of the school year can be challenging? And so it's a way to keep them actively engaged in lessons.
And do Jeremy or Don, you want to talk about your experience? People at the college.
Yeah, I had a great time. It was, I kind of went the road of more of my career, and it was really, it was engaging. The kids asked a ton of questions. You know, my particular job, we got to talk a lot about Bill of Rights and Fourth Amendment stuff and search and seizure and like kind of all the legal stuff in the criminal world. And that was, the kids really engaged, asked a ton of questions. It was a blast. I think we did it seven or eight times. So there definitely came a moment where I was like, did I already say this? Joe's wife cut me off track. It was good. It was a good time.
Yeah, it was, I hadn't been like sort of in a classroom environment like that in like five years. And so we just feel, from a selfish perspective, I thought it was fantastic. Kind of, don't tell, I think maybe with what you made is Zen. So mine was kind of thematic. It was, you know, and I changed it, like what I actually did in each class. I changed it up so it wasn't the same thing for everyone. They couldn't compare the others. That's always helpful. But, you know, it was thematic. It was, you know, you start with the idea that, you know, what you believe actually matters, right? Because belief guides action. And then you have to ask the question, do your actions count? Do they matter at all? And because it was, you know, the social studies with Hagan and other classes, you know, I started talking about, one way or another, I worked in the concept of a one vote win, right? Somebody who wins by one vote, right? And, you know, me and Mr. Politics has to stop at the school's edge. I got up there, I said, kids, it's going to be all politics the whole time. And so we went through some of the one vote wins, like Texas getting the Union by one vote, and when suffrage passed by one vote, and the New Jersey state legislature by a 24-year-old kid who was convinced to change his mind at the last second by his mom. The only person who could deliver that message, right? So his was the only vote that could make the difference. But what his mom believed actually is what made the difference. She took action, and so, I mean, it was great. And I hope the kids liked it. I know, like I said, I'm a little selfish. I thought it was pretty cool.
And we'll have to note for our May meeting, we'll have another participant that will let us know his experiences on the seniors symposium, right, Mr. Nanty?
Yeah, just a minute.
Got you. Thank you. Then, it's not on here, but one other thing. I know there was a major event at SU today. I know it was a big deal because Tom Bull attended, and Dr. Barbara and Carrie went. Tommy, you want to tell us about?
Sure. We are involved in creating a book club partnership with school districts that are involved with our Baldonsa program at Syracuse in school education. So we had an opportunity to have representatives from Baldonsville, West Tennessee, Syracuse City, and Jamesville to Wett administration, those folks, and it gives us an opportunity to collectively read a book. The one that we read and discussed today was one called "Education Wars." And it was just an opportunity for us to have a professional discussion in some of a, I don't know, collegial, sort of not high-pressure setting. And I think it's something that, I think, everybody walked away from feeling as though it was a good experience. And I think it, for me, what it does is it encourages the partnership between higher education, in this case, Syracuse University, and local school districts, which is really why we do what we do is to be able to benefit the students that leave our school as future educators, but also having an impact on the students that they teach. So, did you feel the same way, Carrie?
Yes, you said it perfectly. I mean, I think you're preparing teachers to come to the schools, and we're preparing kids to become teachers and go out to the world, and it was just a great collegial conversation.
Great. Anything else that was, lots going on? And we're always happy to hear from our student representative. So Eze, you have the floor.
Right, I unfortunately did not get to get one of the presentations from the board members, but that's okay. I always heard great things about it. A big aspect that kind of was interesting was that they liked that it was more so focused on local government and local politics and a real representation of that. Because in school, obviously, we worry a little bit about that, but it's more so the history of it and what happened and how what you do impacts in whatever way. For example, like for a college and popular vote. Whereas for local elections and stuff, that's more so focused on the popular vote or how you individually will have a direct impact on what, like you said, what you believe or what you think. So that was actually really interesting here because local politics isn't really... Um, so that was actually really interesting here because, um, local politics isn't really discussed amongst high schoolers at all. It's not really, it's not a hot topic, but, um, it was, it was going around, it was really cool. Um, furthermore, there's a play coming on the 25th and the 26th that is now open to the public again. It's free. Um, it's found on the B T F website and it's called Clue and it's about the board game Clue. So the, um, actors are the Clue characters. It's not a musical or anything, it's just a regular play, but it's more, um, more so focused on the comedic aspect. Um, I'm really excited to see it. Um, this week and last week, so for the Seals of Civic Readiness presentations, if you were in a pick up a what class that happened last weekend and was in front of your teacher, um, this week, the ninth and later on on the 25th after break, um, are the rest of the pick, or of the rest of the Seals of Civic Readiness presentations for those students who are not in pick up a what. Um, and it's just, it's very individualized, which I think is really interesting. For example, mine is on, um, civil service projects that I've done, but it could be about, I know a student who's creating a college guidebook for, um, waiter students and she's getting information from other kids of how, like how, what information would you have wanted to know pursuing your college career that you didn't and that you would like to add to the book? Um, and so it's a huge, like, crash course, it's outstanding. Um, and then we have kids who are doing, who created a project for this, um, seal, which I think was the initial purpose was to get, you know, students minds geared or turning and just help the community in a way that they see fit, um, that impacts other people. Um, kind of similar to that Seal of Fire literacy, um, presentations are going to be, one of these is the 28th and that's the day that most, most students are doing it. Um, they go to OCC even though it's through Bosse's, just because there's so many students pursuing the Seal of Fire literacy. Um, the majority language is, um, Spanish. We already did the English back in, like a couple of months ago, but now it's Spanish. And there are two students who are studying tri-literacy, which will be through Lexishe. The details are still a little fuzzy, but we're getting there. It's really exciting because there haven't been tri-literacy students in a while. Um, Earth Day is the 22nd, I believe. And Environmental Club and Positivity Project are pairing up and they're going to go around campus and pick up trash and, you know, just kind of take trashes out and do whatever they can to kind of serve in their way to help, um, get the Earth Day cleaned up is what they call it. Um, furthermore, AP exams are a hot topic. Those are very much prominent on the students' minds because most classes right now are finished, were finishing with their curriculum and with their testing. And now from, from now to AP test, now to May, it's just like cramming in whatever information you possibly can. Um, but it's good because they're saying they're studying, they're taking classes for reading, so hopefully they all do well. Um, I'm sure they will. The Baldonso, uh, Baldon community scholarship foundation's application closed on March 31st. And the decision will be made on June 11th and you kind of get, um, I was told you'd get like a certificate or something, you'd get an email saying that, oh, you, you won so-and-so's scholarship. And it was actually a table that came into the foyer during lunch period to kind of give us information about that. And they had posters and flyers and answered a lot of questions. Um, and what's really important that wasn't noted that I'm glad I talked about was that the essay portion doesn't actually have to be an essay. It's just a response because I was ready to write like a three-page essay, but it was like only two paragraphs. Um, and then in terms of sports, um, I think I mentioned before, this year we have two flag football teams. It's, um, they're both varsity teams where they get to play, um, the same schools, just different games and they get to support each other. One team will play in sectionals, regionals and states and the other team will not. It's kind of just like a growth year, but it's really great because we get to add 20 more students, um, to the program. And let them learn more about flag football. There are more scholarships being opened for that as well. Um, I know there were a couple of colleges reaching out to the coaches if they had any interested players or wanting to go into college for flag football, which I thought was really great because students only started at least here last year. Um, furthermore, for course selections, those have been officially considered completed for upcoming juniors and sophomores, or upcoming junior sophomores and seniors, um, unless of course students were absent. But that started in December and it only just ended now, so kudos to our guidance counselors. Um, April 22nd, we have our first community cafe. We're like in the Baker High School community. Obviously it's open to lots of people, but that's where it's going to be held. And there's, um, there's a link for signing up in virtual time to other social media, um, platforms. Although it's not required that you sign up, it's just like a little, it's just engage, but really anyone in the community can join. And it'll be in the Baker cafeteria, um, and hopefully that will continue on if it goes well. Um, the, at that meeting, we're going to talk about the construction, which was kind of discussed during the last SAC and DLC meeting. It was March 26th. And it's just a place that you can ask questions, get more information, although not all the questions will be answered because it is very much dependent on the construction and like how the configuration will work. Like for example, um, what we know so far is probably two of the wings in the high school will be blocked off. We're not really sure what stair walls, and so once that information becomes known, then you can make decisions upon that. Like for example, how does it need to get up to the building? Because one of those main stair walls, um, that might be blocked off is the one that we use to get upstairs in the morning through the detention system. So all of that is stuff that can be discussed, might not, might not have a definite answer. And lastly, uh, there's been some, it's been kind of tense in school between students and teachers, not necessarily because of AP tests or the coursework, just because there's a lot of new implementations that kind of cause a rift, maybe not as many explanations, um, not, not as many reasons. Not that the students are entitled to it, but it would be helpful. Um, I was talking to a lot of them about, especially the ones who did not like the ID factors. I was really interested to see like what they thought now they're implemented. And it wasn't so much that, um, they're inconvenienced, but they haven't necessarily changed anything. So they're wearing it or they have it on them when they need. But it's a lot of new things that haven't created much change, which I think is really confusing. Like all these things are supposed to work together and be so great, and yet we have all these things that are layered and nothing great has happened. Um, and just in terms of the ID bagging and all that, um, costing top, class time in the morning, it's taking longer for kids to get to class. And for those who are predisposed to the school bus and the time that they, the school bus arrives, the, uh, you're considered late at 7:31, 7:33 depending on the teacher. And it's difficult to make it to class on time knowing that your bus gets in at a certain time and having to take out all the extra things now. So that's just kind of, it's just a little transition period that students are a little bit, um, impatient with. And then that patience is kind of fed by the constant jabber by other people. You understand what I'm saying? Um, I don't want to like misspeak or anything because I don't, I can't speak of why things are happening. I can only speak on the reaction that we have. Thank you.
Well, a lot, a lot of stuff, thank you. Um, now it is our opportunity to hear from the public if we have any, any participation. We, we do welcome public participation. We do ask that, we limit that to three minutes because we, as you can see, there's a lot going on in the business meeting. But we certainly appreciate it. We do ask that anyone, uh, have the same decorum and civility to, uh, the topic they're speaking on and we would expect of students and, and our professionals here. And I don't know, do we have any, any requests to speak Tiffany?
Um, yes, we do have one request to speak, uh, Robert Rubenstein, uh, regarding USDO requirement for Title I and Title IV.
Do you need to turn on the mic there?
Hi, good evening. Um, as a parent of two children within the school district and seeing many of the things which all of us are seeing coming down in the news, seeing what the US Department of Education is currently requiring of not just state board of educations, but also local board of educations and districts in terms of requiring certification with respect to, um, various programs which the federal government deems for its own reasons inappropriate. As a concerned parent, knowing that the federal government does not have a say or, and in the local curriculum, nor should have a hand in what our students should be learning from a free speech perspective, but also on the basis that they are grossly misinterpreting the Students for Fair Admissions decision from the Supreme Court, as well as misunderstanding the fact that following the Supreme Court decision in the local right matter, that the Department of Education no longer has the right to implement these rule policy changes where Congress is required to act. And so as a concerned parent, I would like to know what the board, as well as the district, is intending to do with regards to that certification that has been sent out.
You know this is not a question and answer period.
I understand it will be discussed, so. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I, I guess at this time we do have some information, so Joe?
Uh, just real quick because we received an update from the New York State Education Department on Friday. And then, uh, both the New York State School Boards Association and the New York State Council of School, School Superintendents have sent additional information. I do know this will be a topic in my local, uh, O C and Bosse's superintendent's meeting on Wednesday. Um, but at this point in time, the New York State Department of Education has already responded. Uh, they, uh, on a, on a regular basis, um, provide, um, guarantees. So the fact that the state education department has already responded, there's no, um, further certification or requirements from local districts or entities to respond. And so at this point in time, based on legal guidance and what we're being informed from the state education department, we don't have any intention of responding to, um, any requests at this point in time. Uh, my understanding too is that the communication went from the federal government, United States Department of Education, to state agencies, uh, not local school districts. So from that perspective, New York State's already responding.
And we are required to follow state guidelines, so. Okay, moving on to our, uh, business agenda. The first thing is the consent agenda. Resolved Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to be attached. Don? Tom? Okay, uh, any questions? This is a pretty lengthy one. Any questions or discussions on this? Received and vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried and we have some pretty significant instructional moves here, Joe?
Yeah, so we're very excited to, uh, welcome Amy Clint Cow as the new principal of Van Buren Elementary School effective July 1. In replacing Amy at Ray Middle School, we're excited to welcome back Tori Seivers as assistant principal. And last but certainly not least, we're excited about the promotion of Jen Turpinning from assistant principal of Baker High School to principal at Baker High School effective July 1.
Congratulations, Dr. Seivers. Congratulations. We're looking forward to working with you and all the good things you'll do for the students of Baldonville, so thank you. Next item is, uh, the policy of David's All Board of Education approved Baldon Central School District policies, Series 3000, 7000, 8000 pursuant to be attached. So, Andrew? Luke? And these have all, I think, been discussed and come from the policy committee, but I was certainly entertaining for the discussion. Hearing done, move to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And, um, next item, D, dissolved Board of Education approved the annual reorganization meeting to be held during the first 15 days of July 2025. Jeremy, Sam? Okay, and then this is to hold it, hold it on July 14th, which we felt would be a convenient date, be after the, of July. Okay, so any thoughts on that? And of course, it's within 15 days, so we're all, all set for it, but, okay. Hearing no further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolved the Board of Education approved the appointment of chairperson, machine technician, B S S specialist, election inspectors, chief election inspectors, and assistant pool clerks for Baldon Central School District 2025, 2026. Budget vote and school board elections held on May 20th, 2024 pursuant to be attached. Kristy? Don? And we are so happy to get these volunteers back. So, uh, I guess, uh, hearing no questions, we'll move to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And again, uh, our deepest gratitude to these people who, some of them year after year, come and, and help us out with this vote. So, the, the one, I do know the one benefit is, I understand there's usually more than enough food to go around. So, and if anybody's thinking about volunteering next year, that is the benefit. Okay. Um, item D, dissolved Board of Education approved the award of athletic equipment supply bids pursuant to be attached. Wayne?
Sam.
Sam, thank you. Um, so just as a, as a question, this is a pretty funky, but this is the lowest bidder and this is the same process we've followed for years, right?
Correct, yes. Uh, we are using the online bid net system now, so everything is submitted electronically and opened electronically. Um, and it's all open to the public and transparent. Um, we did have several bidders, it was competitive and yes, we, we do this annually. Um, our athletic director reviews the bid prior to going out and the items and makes adjustments annually. And then reviews them when they come in for the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you, thank you.
Quick question, the ones that were awarded bids, those are the ones with the zeros, are they just people that are in that system that were bidding? Or why are they on the list, I guess is kind of the question, if they weren't awarded?
Uh, so they were not awarded because they may have spec to their own brand names and not necessarily the brands or the products that we were bidding. That's usually why, or they went below this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Uh, hearing no, move to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, item D, dissolved Board of Education table the appeal of superintendent's hearing decision pursuant to be attached. Kristy?
A sec.
Jeremy? So, been made, uh, motion to table, any discussion or questions? Is it to be tabled to the, uh, pending, uh, the end of our current executive session, like scheduled? Yeah, it still have to be at the next executive, right? So, we'll, I guess we'll table till, till.
Till after that.
Well.
We have to come out.
We'll discuss it at the next executive, is that denied or?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. So I think we're ready to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And of course, the, uh, the board roundtable. The first, uh, question that we've discussed before is the property tax exemptions. And I don't know if there's any further discussion. We have, we have some good data. I was just, we're discussing before this meeting that last year, the average sale in Van Buren was 300,000 and the average sale in Lysander was 400,000 last year. And it doesn't mean everybody's present there, but it means, uh, so that would be what, $76 addition to, at the full, uh, rate? You know, we're talking about the, what am I trying to say, the income exemption? And a hundred dollars essentially at the, at the, at the Lysander, the 400,000. It's $23 per 100,000. So, any other thoughts or questions on this? So, any other thoughts or questions on this?
I think as we pursue the tax exemptions, we've got the data on how much of the tax burden we'd be passing on to other taxpayers. And we know that most districts are not doing the full. Um, so I think the biggest thing we need to decide is, are we going to afford the exemption and at what level? So, I think there's two different decisions. One is, are we going to pursue it or not? And then if we do pursue it, at what rate? And I think it's not an easy decision to just make because it is passing a higher burden on everybody else. But, you know, given our neighboring districts, it seems like a lot of them are doing something. So, I think it's just, we need to further the discussion. We've got a lot of data and, and, uh, research and really do, we need to dig in and move forward. I think, um, you know, as we go forward into this school year and into next, this, this will be getting close to where we're gonna have to act. So, I think just the more we can ask and make sure we all feel comfortable, the better. But I think we're getting to the point where we need to decide yes or no and then decide how much.
That, that was a good summarization. So, Jeremy?
I think maybe if we do feel like we need to act in a particular way on this, it may be interesting. And I know we briefly discussed putting this out to the community, who will be absorbing whatever rake we give to a certain group of people. Um, and I, I know we, we had our guest here where we asked that question. I think we probably could put it out at a vote to our own community to say, hey, we're thinking we may wanna act in a particular way and, and see, see how they respond to that. Has that, has that been done in the past? I don't know.
Um, you can, you can put anything out, uh, in a regular vote. Um, we have other mechanisms to do solicit feedback, whether we do a survey, thought exchange, um, there's a lot of options, um, that the, the board of the district can consider to collect additional information.
And that, that may be more feasible, less than actual voting.
It's definitely faster.
Yeah. It would be interesting for us to gain input. Maybe we feel like we know where our community would wanna do in that regard. Um, I'm not sure, but it would be interesting if we are leaning towards making a decision regarding a particular group in this, recognizing that the rest of our community absorbs whatever rake we give to others. It'd be interesting to get some input.
It'd make for a good thing for a community campaign, wouldn't it? Mm-hmm, yeah, community campaign, you can.
Don?
Couple of thoughts, and it's just a spark one. Um, we've, we've already actually got boards going to polls in May. I don't know if this is, if you wanted to do a referendum, is something they've done in time for May? I don't know.
I don't believe we do the requirements, uh, for the public notification at this point, but there's a certain number of, uh, times it has to appear in the, uh, newspaper, et cetera. Um, but you got me thinking, we do typically have the exit poll. And we could always put that in there and encourage people to also respond as the board contemplates, you know, this decision potentially moving forward, might encourage more people to fill out the exit survey too.
That's true. Um, and just a couple of other thoughts is, um, I think the whole board knows that I'm, I'm denying favor of this idea. I just don't think it's got the name of the education. It was supposed to be taxing for educational purposes and I think this is not that. But the other thing that, that is sort of this moment on my mind, I don't know if any of us, um, might be concerned. So, I'm, I know I look young and spry, but I'm getting old. Um, I'm actually a little concerned with, with voting on this personally because in, in a few years' time, I'm gonna benefit from this. Um, if we do a senior state, for example, a retired person's state. Um, and so, I don't know, other board members are in that position or I don't know how old, you know, people like you are. But.
I should.
I should, yeah, I was.
He's looking at us.
Oh, well, look at that. I hadn't considered that. Um, but, so I, I just, you know, kinda wanted to toss that out and, and suggest that, you know, I mean, me, I'm gonna be kind of thinking about that. It's, it's different from a typical legislative, you know, uh, tax that applies to everyone in all circumstances. It's not that. And so, I think that the threshold for who benefits is, is something to be considered.
I think, Joe, that's a great idea, with the exit poll. We get some, some interest in some stuff and this might be one. We just have to be sure people understand that anytime you grant an exemption to one group, what you do is you redistribute that tax to somebody else. And that's, that obviously is the hard part here, so. Sam?
I think the exit survey could be a good place to start, you know, just to get an idea of how voting members, voting communities members feel about the issue.
Okay, any other thoughts, discussions on that? We'll move on to item two. Um, the annual dinner. And, uh, Joe, you have some information on this.
It just, uh, you know, this is the annual, Central New York, uh, School Boards Association Annual Dinner. It's always a good time at the lodge, whatever it is now, it used to be a lodge at Welch Allen. Um, they have a speaker. Um, it's a nice event. So, just putting it on the board's radar. Thursday, May twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, five to eight. Uh, more information will have in the Friday letter. But if you are interested in going, please, uh, let me and, uh, Kristy know and we will make sure that we get you registered.
I think the other one too is, uh, Kristy had mentioned on May seventh, there's a virtual policy, um, seminar that, uh, I think if any of us can get on, I know I'm gonna try to do the same, but I think that's one because we're doing some things with our policy. I think it'd be really good. It's only a three-hour one, so it's not taking up our whole day. But it's like eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. So, that's May seventh. We wanna let, um, Kristy and George off the snow as well.
Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you. Okay, any other thoughts on roundtable? Okay, if not, we will, uh, move back to executive session. Resolved Board of Education entering to executive session, discuss the employment history of a particular person.
So, uh, and?
And student disciplinary.
And, thank you, thank you. And, and student disciplinary appeal. Thank you. Okay, Jeremy? I have one over here. Sam? Okay, uh, those in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So, we stand adjourned from our business meeting and we'll go into exec. Thank you, everyone, for attending. And again, congratulations to those significant promotions.